All the media on the North Syracuse Board of Education to order, please rise and join me with the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to begin with a moment of silence for the following. Charles Organski, retiree of the North Syracuse Central School District. Paul David Stelmasik, a retiree of the North Syracuse Central School District. Harry Delash, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Susan Noble, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. And Edward Griffin, a retiree of the North Syracuse Central School District. Thank you. Okay, we're going to begin this evening with a presentation from our Human Rights Club. So if you're here, we're going to turn it right over to you right now. We have microphone up there, right?
So I don't think I knew this, but I'm Jackie Heeman. I'm a student's Human Rights Club Advisor. And we are missing a couple of students. A couple of students fall sick really quickly. And so we were just trying to like reorganize. So sorry if we're a little nervous and we're a little jumpy, but these kids are amazing. On my worst days, they bring me so much joy and make me have faith in our student body and all the good things young people have to offer. So I'll just let them introduce themselves and take this presentation away.
Hi, I'm Maddie Rodowski. I'm the social media manager of the Human Rights Club.
Hello, my name is Ethan Myvus and I'm a new member this year.
My name is Lily Mesko and I'm a new member.
My name is Nifor Ha, but I'm a new member as well.
My name is Emily Bradley and I'm also a new member.
So we are the Human Rights Club and this entire presentation is just to help bring diversity to our schools. I think the most important part about being in school was like learning about different cultures and backgrounds. And this is basically just the entire, our entire speech is to help bring that and help realize that we are more diverse than we think we are. So our mission as the Student Human Rights Club is to assure the implementation of both civil and human rights policy within the CNS community. You're advocating before social justice issues while educating the staff and students, we will be able to establish a more inclusive environment. And we'll be able to believe that injustice and oppression in our school directly impacts the entirety of the school community.
Here are just some things that we accomplished within the past year. Last year during May, we did an illuminate CNS night to raise awareness for mental health and suicide prevention. We raised over $250, which we donated to a local chapter of the American Suicide Prevention Society. We also create monthly bulletin boards for months such as API Month, Pride Month. We recently did one for the land that we live on for indigenous groups. And we also did one for Black History Month where we did history that you may not have known. We also have created a bunch of websites to promote diversity and more knowledge on these subjects. And one of our members who couldn't be here tonight spent a lot of time making a Black Lives Matter and Black History Month website.
Okay, so here our club has highlighted the countries that our school represents in blue. And we got this info by issuing a survey to all the English classes in the high school. This, we filtered through about 750 responses. And as you can see, about 50% of the map is colored in blue. That's about 60 countries that CNS represents. And the reason why this is significant is because we have to make sure that all of these students feel represented and valued at our high school. It's extremely important to have many diverse languages and ethnicities represented in our school because there are many languages and ethnicities in our school. And so in an average, create a more inclusive school environment. The flags will provide representation for our diverse, for our very diverse community, which is what our community deserves.
Oh, hi.
Represented here are more than just languages and countries. There are the cultures, people, and communities that are united under them. Regardless of how far these flags are from each other, whether it be separated by continents or as close as the united nation, through buying these flags, we hope to create a way for students to feel heard and represented in our school.
There are so many different students in our school that come from different parts of the world. And representation is important because it helps people feel like they aren't alone. Being aware of our differences can help us learn more about each other and connect us with people who we can relate to.
I myself come from a family where both parents were born and raised in Ghana. So when coming to school, a place that is supposed to celebrate differences, I felt out of place as so many of the people were different from me and didn't have the same background. So I wasn't really able to relate with anyone. So with the help of our mission, we are able to help create new communities of people who have the same background and help spread that awareness of diversity.
So specifics of the fly project is that the flags would go in a common area for all students, which is the cafeteria. Cafeteria is a place where many students from all different backgrounds meet every day and is a common area for all. There'd be 64 flags hung up that are two feet by three feet where they'd be seen by all students, adding a necessary reminder of the diversity present in our school. These can be positioned anywhere in the cafeteria and there'd be more details to follow.
This is just the nice thing.
Thank you. Okay, so I just wanted to reiterate real quick about slide three that y'all just witnessed about what we've accomplished. So as previously stated within our club's mission statement, we strive towards promoting diversity and inclusion to better our school community. That being said, as a newly formed club, we've accomplished many things doing just that. For example, last year, our first organized event was illuminate CNS, a candlelight event held at the high school, which memorialized students who have passed and also further opened the overlooked conversation regarding the declining mental health of students. Looking at this schools, at this past school year, the CNS turned, the CNS Human Rights Club created several campaigns, spreading awareness of New York's saddened history involving the Anadaga Nation and the importance of acknowledging the land that we take for granted. In addition, in the month of February, we created both a bulletin board and a website celebrating Black History Month while sharing stories of prominent black leaders that are overshadowed in our curriculum. And now our latest endeavor is the North Stars Nations. With this push, our club plans to purchase these flags represented of the student bodies diverse cultural backgrounds and proudly present them within our school walls. By doing so, we further strive towards promoting diversity and inclusion while listening to over 700 students who eagerly replied to our surveys regarding their cultural backgrounds. So as it was prevalent in our slides, we hope to promote diversity and more inclusion by purchasing these flags to provide a more representative school community within CNS.
I have a question. I just want to say thank you for everything you're doing. It really means a lot to not only the students, but our community as a whole. The impact is already huge and it's just going to keep growing. And I can't wait to visit the cafeteria when to see all these flags because that's just amazing. So thank you so much.
Awesome. Thank you.
Great job, everyone. The 64 flags are representative of the 64 nations that are within the school district or?
Yes, but there will be many more as the school year keeps on going on.
Good. So that's what was my question. Will you be adding flags as new nations?
Of course, as more students come to Human Rights Club or, you know, tell some teacher to tell us, or we'll just keep on providing out surveys to get more student involvement by telling us their cultural backgrounds.
Love it. Thank you. Of course.
I have a question. If anybody else, there was a somewhere over here, a question about or a statement about you. And I just wanted more specifics. You formed communities of students with similar backgrounds. I think you said that. And so I just wanted to know what, what's that look like? Like, what do you, what are you doing? How's that work?
It's just as coming up to the high school, it's really hard to create like new friends or just people to talk to. And I knew that with the help of this club and other clubs like Umoja, I was able to find people who came from different backgrounds like me and had immigrant parents who were able to share those same, like, what do you think, like experiences?
Okay, so that's, so not just immigrant parents from Ghana, but immigrant parents in general. So they shared the same experience. Okay. Yeah, I just wondered, so you have that group that I don't know if they, they meet formally or you just have a group that you know you can connect with?
They're able to connect with, yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you. And this has been about a, about a year. So you've all been in the high school. What do you, what do you, do you see? Do you see small changes? Somebody tell me a little bit about what you see has happened or maybe improved because of this. This is, I just think this is extremely important. I mean, you all watch the news or you see stuff on social media. This is really important. So I just wonder what you see is because we've screwed up people my age. You, you have, you have to fix this. Okay. I'm sorry. I apologize on behalf of all the old folks. Yeah.
So when I first came up to the high school seeing of like people who took on like more important roles like National Honor Society President or just other like big on roles who were really have like a say in the community, they were usually white people. And I just think that with the help of this, it will help realize that like we could do so much more people of color and it will help bring people like me or like people of color up to those big roles and help show our diversity through that.
Okay, any, anybody else want to share anything? Yeah, please.
I mean, even if you're just walking through the hallway, if you look at one of our bulletins and go, oh yeah, I see that, you know, that's just, that is enough to get something thinking in your head. And that's part of what our goal is with the bulletins.
Okay. I mean, and I know I'm flippant, but I'm really serious. I mean, I, I, I've, I've seen it. I mean, I grew up in the sixties and seventies. I feel like we've gone backwards and I find it really disturbing. And I'm disturbed that we can't even talk about certain things now without labels being thrown at us. And so I think this is really, really cool and really important. And I commend you for doing this and just keep trying, keep plugging along no matter what. Please, please. Thank you.
Can I ask, like, how many roughly kids are in the group? And do you meet like once a week or?
Yes, there's about 20 of us, I would like to say, but we're also involved in a lot of other clubs such as Umoja, like Principal's Cabinet, National Honor Society. Ironically, I mean, all of them, but let's talk about that. But yes, we meet once a week and it's on Mondays. We decided that Mondays is just like better fitting for our schedule. But basically, our meetings kind of consist of us sitting down around a big table, kind of like a great Thanksgiving type of energy. But we sit around, we talk about like stuff, five minutes was happening in our lives. We eat snacks that Miss Hammond thankfully provides for us. Thank you, Miss Hammond. And we just talk about what's going on in our life, what's going on in current events and just, you know, get some stuff off our chest. And then we go straight into the business like such as presenting this sideshow about North Stars Nations or working on our period project, Project P, or Go With The Flow, or even just wanting to talk to the principal about, I don't know, how we can better our school community.
Thank you so much.
Of course.
Okay, I'd like to piggyback on Paul, just to say that. Thank you. Stay strong. And I hope that when you're done with your career at CNS, that you'll take it with you and express this as you, as you grow and become all folks like us. Thank you.
Thank you.
And come back, come back anytime. Let us know.
I would love to.
Thank you.
You would love to.
Hey, we have the 2022, 2023 athletics presentation. So Mr. Benartski, take over.
All right. Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to be here tonight to share the successes within the athletic department for the 2223 school year. Before I start, I would like to show a quick little video recapping CNS athletics this year.
Coming back after a once in a lifetime pandemic, there was a concern that our student athletes might have trouble adapting. With pandemic learning loss and surging mental health problems, it wouldn't be a surprise to see our students taken aback. But backing down just isn't the North Star way. From the basketball court to the soccer field, our athletes have demonstrated their unwavering commitment and resilience. Parents, teachers, friends, and the entire CNS community have come together to support and encourage these extraordinary young men and women. How strong was our North Star comeback? Our marching band went back to the New York State Championships to once again represent our school with dignity. Our CNS varsity wrestling team was able to bring home a section three title for the first time in school history. And our North Star Men Soccer Team went all the way to the New York State Final Four game. To top it all off, the CNS North Star Network is growing bigger with every broadcast. From garnering over 1,000 viewers in a single match, to calling professional games at NBT Bank Stadium, to meeting ESPN legend at CNS alum Beth Moens, the network is only going up from here. They've passionately captured the exhilaration, the victories, and the essence of CNS athletics, bringing the spirit of competition to every viewer. Through athletics, our students learn the value of teamwork, discipline, perseverance, and leadership. They understand the power of setting goals, facing challenges head on, and celebrating both victories and defeats. We know we're not alone in feeling gratitude towards our team's accomplishments. And we know you'll be joining us and cheering on our students for many years to come.
So as you can see, it was a great year. We were fortunate to capture seven sectional three titles, seven league championships, three New York State Final Four, a state runner-up in field hockey, state championship runners in indoor, and hopefully some more this weekend as they go down to Middletown. And as mentioned in the video, state championship in March. While this was all happening, we had a group of students that was able to capture this all live from our stadium, baseball, Michael J. Bragman, as it mentioned in the video, NBT, they, they were everywhere. And they brought these, these games to people all over the state, all over the country. I can't tell you how many compliments I have received about these group of students that are here tonight. And I asked Mr. Bowles to bring them tonight to honor them as I think it's well deserved for all their hard work and dedication with the North Star Network. They, they, I believe are the only broadcasting group in section three. But if there, if there is another one, they're not as good as ours. They are outstanding. The preparation, the homework they do on other teams. This weekend, we hosted regional lacrosse. It wasn't even CNS. And they prepared themselves for these teams on a short time notice. And if you listen to them, they know like they've been broadcasting them all year long. What's also interesting, if you do or have ever watched them, is they always seem to amaze me with the improvements that they've made from replay to special live guest. I mean, they even had Mr. Crabtree climbing up on the roof to do a broadcast this year. And Mr. Bowles, that's correct. They do pre and post interviews with students and coaches. And our student athletes and our students love the attention of getting interviewed by, by the crew. So I look forward to watching this grow. And that's my goal as the athletic director is to continue this and make it better, bigger and better. This group will be gone in a few years, but we want to continue to, to have it grow. If you haven't had the opportunity to see them, all of our games are archived on our website under the media tab. Just go in and watch the broadcast. It looks like something on ESPN. So these individuals futures are bright in the broadcasting world, and I look forward to watching them grow. And I do have to mention two individuals, Kyle Marchak and Giovanni Heater, who kind of started this during COVID. And they just received a first and second team All-American honors at Virginia Tech University in, in the broadcasting field. And it was honored by, I think it was Jim Nance's award. So it's working and these, these students have, are going to have a great futures in, in the broadcasting world. So at this time, I would like to call those, those students up and present them with a certificate of achievement and for all their hard work and dedication with the North Star Network. First, we have Joe Seidman. Emily Porter. Landon Cook. Hunter Bajuska. Drew Mediasic. Emma Hall. Aaron Tarquinho. Congratulations. One student absent tonight is Luke Ballinger. And last but not least, Johnny Leacy. And one more individual I'd like to honor is the teacher of the sports media class, who also is kind of my go-to and helps me organize this group and getting the kids motivated to make the changes. And I appreciate all his hard work and his friendship. And that's Mr. Mark Vannett. Thank you. So how about one more round of applause for these students? I asked them if they want to say something, but they like to talk. So we'll, we'll, we'll let that go. If you guys will go out in the hall after and we'll get, we'll get a couple pictures. So thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Yes, absolutely.
Before you go out, Tim, your leadership, you know, a lot of Xavier, by the way, was also online at a basketball game. But your leadership, your secretary have made the North Star Nation amazing. Even if they don't win, they make us proud. They make our district very proud. And thank you for your leadership, but also your secretary. And I know we're going to do even better. Thank you.
Pretty, pretty high up.
Hey, thank you. So I know, please don't feel badly as people leave just before the school, school. I know we have a school accountability presentation and I'm, I'm excited about this. And so Donna Marie, thank you. Please, when you're ready, it's all yours.
Got it. Ooh. Okay. So for some of the newer board members, my name is Donna Marie Norton. Official title is Executive Director of Data and Accountability. And every year I come to the board and, well, except for the past two years, because it was crazy, and give an accountability presentation. So that's what this is about. So why do we have it? What is the accountability regulation? This is tied to the Every Student Succeeds Act, which is also known as ESSA. And it was preceded by No Child Left Behind, NCLB. So in 2015, this new law was enacted. And honestly, it's how the New York State Education Department and the US Department of Education hold schools accountable. That's the basics. But things are new. Because of the pandemic, and you're going to hear me say that over and over again, and the lack of testing or the scattering of testing or the exemptions with testing that we've had over the past couple of years, what I'm going to present to you is really only a one-year model. I can't say that this is how it's going to continue, but I'm just going to tell you how they graded schools this year. And that is based on the 2122 data because there really wasn't anything in 1920, and there was very little in 2021. So we were on pause for a couple of years. So what did they get rid of? And every year I come here and I give you the different categories. So I'm going to go through them just a little bit to kind of reteach you. Sorry. First thing they got rid of was growth. Growth measures on our school accountability are when you compare a student's test score from, say, grade three, the prior year, to grade four the next year. And since we had sporadic testing, growth is out the window for this one year. You will see later on that it is coming back, but it's going to be for information only next year. And then maybe after that, they'll kick it back in again. CCCR is really only a high school metric, and that is college and career ready, college career and civic readiness. And they threw that out. So we're not having that this year. They said that there was too much missing data. Really, it was because of the Regents exemptions. So we just don't have it this year. That one's definitely coming back. Academic progress was when state ed set targets that you had to meet. And the idea was over so many years, the targets would increase, increase, increase until all students were reaching the targets. And there have been multiple resets on that over the years that I've had this position. So lots of data was missing, therefore progress is out. And then performance is still in, but it's going to look very different. So what stayed? Graduation rate. State ed decided that graduation rate was a pretty reliable. We still had it, even though students were exempt from many of the exams and things that they needed to pass. We still had students graduate. So that was kept. ELP, English Language Learners, state ed felt that that data was valid. And that is how we test students' progress in learning English. Chronic absenteeism is still in the mix, unfortunately. And we did see skyrocketing absenteeism during the pandemic and even after. You know, we didn't want students to come to school when they felt sick. State ed reset some of the targets for this expecting that the numbers were going to be high. And then performance again, there it is, but it's going to be a slightly different way to look at it. They actually took performance and split it into two different categories. So we're talking about how students perform on those three through eight exams, on the ELA Regents, and on on the ELA Regents and on math regions. So that's what they're looking at. They split it into two categories, one called weighted performance and one called core performance. Weighted performance is everyone who should have tested. So as you might recall, a few years ago, we had more of a movement of students refusing to test, sometimes called the opt-out movement, had different names. And you are expected to test all of your students. So the entire denominator would be your student population in the weighted area. Core, and I think this is kind of a gift, and I'm hoping that it stays. Core is only the students that actually took the exam. And those two categories were given equal weight for this year. I'd love to see that stay. I can't say it's going to, but it would be great. So after the students take the test and all these metrics are configured, you know, how do they rank the schools? And that's the next slide. So each school is given a one through four score on each of these categories. And the way that they do it is they take all of the test scores, all of the absent data, all of the graduation rate, and they look at your district, your school ranked to all the other schools that are in New York State. Those that are in the lowest 10% earn a one. Those that are 10.1 to 50, look at the range in that. The data girl in me loses my mind when I see unequal ranges like this. That's a two. 50.1 to 75 is a three, and then any school that's in that top 25% earns a four for those particular categories. So the two things that you can get on the list for are if your students are underperforming in a particular subgroup consistently over two years, and that's called a TSI school. Or if your all-student category is underperforming for two consecutive years, and that's the CSI category. You don't want to be CSI. So how did we do? The whole district, all of the students that took the exams, these are the scores. So core, a two, weighted a two, ELP a four, chronic absenteeism a two, and grad rated two. And then each of the individual schools, I'm just going to go through each one quickly. I'm not going to read them to you. You can see them. And basically what I said state ed is looking at is did the schools make progress? So honestly, the numbers on the left-hand side are not as important as how they compared them to the numbers that they were before. So Allen Road is considered a school who made progress. They're not going to be in a TSI category. They're not going to be in a CSI category. They're fine. Same thing with Bear Road. Even those numbers are slightly lower, they're improvements over what they were before. So as long as you're showing progress, you don't end up on the list. So no TSI, no CSI. Cicerol, slightly better. Lake Shore. Roxelle was great news. And if you had been around here when they got off of the list because they had been labeled as a CSI, a comprehensive support school, huge celebration for the schools that were in prior categories. And Roxelle is currently off the list. Now, we need to watch, and we certainly need to improve, but they're making progress. And that's what is, that's what counts right now in state ed. The old model, Paul, you might remember, and NCLB was not about progress. Okay, so it's kind of nice to see this. Smith Road made progress. Gillette Road's doing fine. Rox Middle also got off the list. I wish I had been at that meeting. I heard the celebration was huge. I had a conflict and I couldn't go. But to see these, the two schools, Roxelle and Rox Middle, come off the list was quite a celebration in those buildings. So definitely showing progress. North Syracuse Junior High School is still on the list. So they are a lower category, a TSI school district, and we'll talk about why near the end of the presentation. So there are one school right now that is still on the list as a TSI. And the high school did fine, too. So overall, what it means, there should be a little green check there. Here we go. Okay. Rox Middle, no longer TSI. Roxelle, no longer CSI, and that the junior high is currently a TSI building. So specific areas of concern, and these are interesting. We've had lots of talk about these. Our African-American subgroup, the core and the weighted, were both too low. And Dan and I talked about this presentation before I got it. I'm going to give you a little bit of extra information that's not in the slides. This is a small subgroup of students, but out of the 26 students that fall into the African-American subgroup, only 15 took the math test. So our participation rate is very low, right? And that hurts. Out of those 15 students, no one earned a three or a four. No one was proficient to took the test. In ELA, we had slightly more, 19 out of the 27 kids at that time took the test, but only one student was proficient. So it really shows you where you need to target, you know, some of your resources. Participation rate of all students actually is is overall a concern. And it definitely falls off. It seems like third and fourth grade more compliant. And then as you get up into the older grades, especially eighth, our participation rate really takes a nosedive. We saw increased numbers of students taking the test this year. The administration, the teachers were very encouraging and really pushing kids a little bit to to take those exams, which is going to help us, I think, when this data for 2223 comes out. We also need to look at the attendance of students in the subgroups of African-American, Hispanic, and economically disadvantaged students in poverty, because we still have high chronic absenteeism in those subgroups, and you are held accountable for it. So what does the future hold? Like I said before, growth will come back next year. It's for our information only. And then I believe the year after that will be held accountable for it. Right now, the exit criteria, so for the junior high, and Dan and I were celebrating this a little bit earlier, for the junior high to get off of the TSI list, they really only need one good year. Usually it's two. So we're getting a little gift this year because of the pandemic. So we think the students did well on the exams this spring. When the data comes in, unfortunately, it's very late when the data comes in, which bothers some anyway. One year to the good, and they'll be able to get off the list. They're going to reset those targets based on the newest data from from this year. And right now, there are no new CSI or TSI schools that will be labeled for the upcoming school year. So that's it. Do you have any questions for me? I know riveting stuff, right?
Well, that the ranking, the one through four, he had a slide that you know, the one you didn't like, the uneven numbers. That that this is a new, this is new in ESSA. How long have they been using that kind of? There's not a number on her, I tell you, with slide, that one.
Yep.
When did they, when did we start or they or whoever?
2015.
That's been used since then?
Yep.
So in order, I mean, we're talking about looking for improvement, we're rated against every other school.
Every other school. And your demographic, poverty, ethnicity, none of that matters. You're just blank rating.
Look at the CNS graduation rate. I look at it when we get that data. I think it's fantastic.
It is. And our high school has actually been a reward school, recognition school. So we've been on the high list. What's amazing is when you go from eighth grade to 11th, 10th grade, when they're taking Regents exams, sometimes I think it's the kids not taking the exam seriously.
In eighth grade?
Mm-hmm.
That's but that's been a thing forever.
It is.
I mean, the 11th, like ELA, for example, right? The 11th grade data is always really good and the eighth grade data slumps.
Yes. But if you look at this, we need to make it better than everybody else.
Yeah, I don't like that.
I know.
Just.
Me neither, Paul.
There's a point I make. I don't I don't understand that system. I hope it changes. I understand it. I don't care for it. I'll stop. I only dabbled in the data world briefly within that, as you remember.
I do remember. We were in the same meetings.
So.
I got a question. So with the individual schools, how many students does a school need to qualify for the ELP set category?
Thirty.
Thirty?
Yep.
How many, how far off are we on all the other schools? Is it how far off are we on the schools that are like not?
Oh, I don't, I don't know. I just know when it reaches that 30 threshold, because then I get the data. I don't know. And our ELP numbers are rising.
Here's my question. Is the lack of participation, is that, do you think it's intentional, like, or is it? Like, I assume that's a parent decision, not a kid decision, right?
It actually can be both. So we've had parents that have sent letters in saying that their students aren't going to be taking exams. And then we've had kids on the day of the exam saying, I'm not taking it. And the student honestly has always had the right to refuse those exams because they don't have any connection to their grades or their achievement. It's really a test of the program, not of that individual student.
I think if I'm wrong, these exams are a little different than the ones people were highly boycotting like five or six years ago, or they're not the same.
It's actually, I mean, it's the same system. It's a different vendor right now. It's been Pearson, Questar, back to Pearson. So you know, the vendor changes. And you know, the complaint has been how many teachers are on those committees that are creating those exams? Or is it just psychometricians that are creating those exams? Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah. Silence means we're all good now.
Riveting. I know.
Oh, that was, it was, it was interesting. I understand a little bit more every time. Individuals wishing to address the board. Board of Education Committee reports, I will go to, we have a lot of stuff on policies. So tell me what you've brought to us today, Mr. Thorne.
Certainly, Mr. Fafalia. On tonight's agenda, we have, I don't know if it's a record, but 10 policies, including three first reads. So hopefully, everyone has had a chance to peruse those. Our next policy committee meeting will be the 20th of June.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Crabtree, Legislative News.
There's no report, but on Wednesday, we will be celebrating all the work that this administration has done. NSCA, teachers, and everybody for a great year of getting funding for this school district.
Thank you. Superintendent's comments.
Okay, as you can see from the presentations from the Human Rights and the North Star Network, we have some of the best students in the county, bar none. Our students are top-notch, and I will put them up against anyone else. And Mr. Bednarzki referenced some previous students that are now at the college level, and they are also performing at a high level. But wherever I go with the North Star Network, people outside of New York are talking about what our kids are doing now. And they're, they're blazing a path for themselves for the future. And they're excited, and it's only gaining momentum. And you saw the students with the human rights. I can't wait to see the flags when they're up. If you went to the Festival of Nations, and I know a few of you went, the pride that was there in that room of students and families about their culture was amazing. So just want to, again, acknowledge them again, and what Jackie Hamon and Tim Bednarzki have done with both groups. This past weekend, there was a fair, Roxboro Fun Fair down on Saturday from 11 to 4. A lot of vendors in the community. It was a great event. People loved dunking the principal in the dunk tank. But they are raising money again for their playground to be all-inclusive. I will again mention way back when I was a principal down there. But at the time, the playground we put in had wood chips for the flooring. It is not accessible for all. They are trying to make sure everything that they do, when we talk about our mission statement, when we say all, we're trying to make sure everyone's included. So it was a great event, and I want to thank, thank the community. We had awards night on Thursday for, at the high school, again, many parents and students. It was a great event. I want to commend Mr. Nephew and Mrs. Herrera for the retirement reception. Again, each year, we try to tweak it to get a little bit better, to recognize all the talent that that was there and that unfortunately is leaving us. And hopefully, they'll come back and sub. The one thing I don't know if you realize, but the students that were here tonight, how they were dressed, they take their jobs and the things that they do very seriously. They're professional in every step of the way, and that's how we're instructing them. So that when they leave here, they're going to go out and be successful. And there are just little nuances that we're trying to make sure that we instill in our students, because we want to make sure we have the best that we're putting out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles. Board of Education comments. Okay, yep.
Beth will appreciate this. I was invited to Lake Shore a couple of weeks ago to read to kindergarten students, and I received this today. I know Beth, how much, you know, I read A House for a Hermit Crab, and they sent me this and all signed it. That's what it's all about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crabtree. Okay, I have, I have comments, just that it's Ms. Kruger's last board meeting today. And so I want, Terry, I wanted to thank you. I mean, you know, we're nine folks that are kind of diverse. We all have different backgrounds and different perspectives. And so I want you to know, I mean, it says here on the plaque, it's been five years, huh? Thank you for what you've brought to the table. Thank you for the time you've given us. It's been really clear, just from listening to you, that you care about our students. You care about their well-being and their mental health. It's been made very clear. So I thank you for that. Please know, I know I'll miss you. I'm sure I'm speaking for the board that that you'll be missed. So we have a little plaque for you. And then when we're trudging through executive session, we will have cake. I'm going to read this, though. I read, I, we did this for Mary last year, and I love this, this quote. And in inner light, no matter how faint, when nurtured by knowledge, truth, patience, and belief, grows bright through education and can light a child's way for a lifetime. So this is in recognition and appreciation for your dedication, hard work, and caring for the students, staff members, and community member of the North Syracuse Central School District. So thank you. I'll bring that to you. Thank you.
You guys are too sweet. I was not expecting this, and I'm trying to fight tears. As you can see, it's very sweet of you. It's meant so much to me with child advocacy being at the heart of why I wanted to be on the board. The court-appointed special advocate for children was, I like to say, too close to the fire. You got to see actually how individually, you know, face to face, how these kids were harmed by their surroundings. And being on the Board of Education, I got to have an effect on multiple children's lives, not just one-on-one. And, you know, not being able to see the direct effect, but still knowing that that one was made. And I am definitely going to miss every single one of you. So and I really appreciate my time here. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Hey, if I could get a motion for consideration or approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the board on May 22, 2023. Dr. Kramer, motion sec from Mr. Thorne. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose, thank you. That is carried. A motion to place items B, C, and D together, please. Motion from Mr. Maurizio, second from Mrs. Segru. These are the classification in place for the disabled students for school, preschool, and home instruction. They're before us. Any questions? Because seeing none, all in favor. Pose, thank you. That is carried. We have a vehicle bonding resolution. Can I get a motion to place that before us, please? Motion from Mr. Moody Wuzik, second from Ms. Kruger. That's before us. Any discussion? And it was explained to us in the Friday letter, but if there's no discussion, we have a roll call vote for that.
Paul Farfalia, President.
Aye.
Michael Maurizio, Vice President.
Aye.
Robert Crabtree.
Aye.
Matthew Herman.
Aye.
Beth Kramer.
Aye.
Terry Kruger.
Aye.
Xavier Muschek.
Aye.
Amanda Segru.
Aye.
And Mark Thorne.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. That is, that is carried. Thank you very much. Acknowledgement of a gift motion, please, for that motion from Dr. Kramer, second from Ms. Kruger. That is before us. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose, thank you. That is carried. C, resolution to authorize appraisals. Again, this will be a roll call vote, but we need a motion to put this before us. Motion from Dr. Kramer, second from Mr. Thorne. That is before us. Questions, comments? Hey. Yeah. Okay, but I was just going to say what Mr. Keegan would say, if you would say, I mean, it was explained to us, these are the the assessment challenges that we have. We're getting the third party, or whatever you want to call that assessment that's being split with us and the other municipalities, think of the other parties, I was going to say. See, we need Don here, because I'm babbling and I'm making any sense. That's before us. Yes, go ahead.
Paul Farfalia, President.
Aye.
Michael Marizio, Vice President.
Yes.
Robert Crabtree.
Aye.
Matthew Herman. Beth Kramer.
Aye.
Terry Krueger.
Aye.
Amanda Segru.
Aye.
And Mark Thorne.
Hey, that is carried. Thank you. D, request for grades, the approval of the grade five through eight ELA textbook. Motion, please, a motion from Ms. Krueger, second from Mr. Moody Wuzik. Question, discussion, comments? Okay, all in favor? Post, and that is carried. Resolution to modify teacher aid position at Allen Road. Please, a motion to place that. Motion, Mr. Thorne, second from Dr. Kramer. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Post, and that is carried. Thank you. Resolution to create a half-FTE school psychologist at Smith Road. Motion from Mr. Marizio, second from Ms. Segru. That is before us. Any discussion, questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Post, and that is carried. And G, a resolution to ratify attached agreement. Motion from Ms. Krueger, second from Mr. Moody Wuzik. Thank you. That is before us. All in favor? Post, that item is carried. I'd like to take the policy items H through Q, if I could, all together, if somebody make a motion for that. Motion from Mr. Thorne, second from Ms. Krueger. Okay. We have 10 policies before us. Anybody need to pull one out or discuss anyone in there, or question about anything? Okay. All in favor? Post, and those are all carried. Some will be back to us for the second reading. And motion, please, for R, the establishment of our annual organizational meeting date. Motion from Mr. Moody Wuzik, second from Ms. Krueger. And we see that as a first date of July 10th, 2023. Okay, all in favor? Post, and that is carried. Just a quick, not a quick, but I will give it the proper time. Recognition of three retirements that came in. They're in Schedule A, and I believe, yeah, they're all in Schedule A. Tammy Gondak, teaching assistant, retiring with 18 years of service. Deborah Murray, teaching assistant, retiring with 18.2 years of service. And Erin O'Toole, English teacher, retires with 24.3 years of service. So thank you to them for their service, and we'll be seeing them in next year's retirement event, I hope. Instructional personnel report, A, please. A motion to place that before us. Motion from Mr. Thorne, second from Ms. Segru. A is before us. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Post, that is carried. Support staff personnel, B, please. Motion placed that before us, first from Mr. Marizio, second from Ms. Krueger. B is before us. Questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Post, that is carried. An administrative personnel report, C, a motion placed that before us, please. Motion, Mr. Marizio, second from Mr. Crabtree. That is before us. No discussion, all in favor? Okay, I was going to comment after. Oh, you're going to comment after. Okay, go. Probably should do it now, but dispense. All right. All in favor? Post, that is carried. And congratulations, Katie Reeve, who's with us. Thank you. Some of you, I think most of us got a chance to meet her today. Did you want to add anything, please? Okay.
I've known Catherine for, Katie, sorry, for a couple of years, and her ability to work with special needs kids is amazing. She treats each student individually, and she knows them. And I know she's going to bring this to North Syracuse. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to make a motion for executive session. I'll ask for a second. The motions to move in for the purpose of receiving an update on negotiations regarding non-affiliates. To receive an update regarding two legal matters with no action to follow. And have a brief workshop regarding the upcoming superintendent's evaluation. Second, please. Second from Mr. Moody Wuzik. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Post, and that is carried. And a motion to adjourn. Motion of Mr. Thorne, second from Ms. Marizio. Any discussion? All in favor? Post? Were adjourned. Thank you.